Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Ramsey.
Present.
Trustee Rias.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Slaton.
Here.
President Osberry.
Here, we have four.
Yes, and I will reflect that trustee Moore is absent in the midst.
Thank you so very much.
Prayer?
Father, in your name, we thank you for once again gathering, oh God, under the banner of the Village of Hazelcrest. Lord, we thank you for the business that has to be done. We thank you for those that are in charge. We ask that you continue to lead, guide, oh God, convicted hearts in the name of Jesus, so that we may move this village forward. These are all blessings we continue to ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any consideration for remote participation? No, President Osberry. Any correspondence? Uh, no, President Osberry. Okay. President's report. First, I'm gonna read the proclamation from recognition, recognized Sunday, September the 16th, during its early 2018, as the American Legion Day in the Village of Hazelcrest. We, uh, sorry. Whereas American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September the 16th as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of the Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Child, Children, and Youth. And whereas over the years, American Legion has become a permanent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, and over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars that benefits our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas American Legion was dedicated to upholding ideals of the freedom and democracy while working to make differences in the lives of fellow Americans, and whereas the 2018 observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community. Now therefore, I, Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., President of the Village of Hazelcrest, County of Cook, and State of Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2018, as American Legion Day in the Village of Hazelcrest, and urge all citizens to support this effort of this organization. Signed, the 24th of July, 2018. Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., President. Thank you, everyone. Then we had another proclamation, a resolution. Is the family gonna be here, General? This is a resolution for Mr. Richard Griffin, Jr.
Senior.
Senior, I'm sorry. Senior. This resolution reads, "In deepest gratitude to Richard Griffin, Jr., whereas Richard Griffin, Jr. was born July 26, 1937, to Walter and Neely Griffin, Sr., in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas Richard Griffin was united in holy matrimony to Barbara, to this union, two sons and one daughter were nurtured, Kimberly, Richard, Jr., and Randell. And whereas Richard Griffin was dedicated, a dedicated coach and mentor, and remains a loyal friend and loving father. And whereas Richard Griffin was former tight end for the Oakland Raiders for the National Football League, alumnus of Tennessee State University, and a proud member of Capa Apfa Side fraternity." I know what that fraternity was, yeah. For more than 50 years. And whereas Richard Griffin, also known as Coach Griffin, and effectively called Pops, was a void football coach at Hyde Park High School for more than 30 years, unseverately assisted many students with their entry into college and the NFL, graciously retired from service after 40 years, is now 80 years young. And whereas Richard Griffin is a gen- uh, genism, genism?
Gymnasium.
Uh, now is a honor Hyde Park High School, has a gymnasium, I'm sorry, a gymnasium named in his honor at Hyde Park High School, as testament to his loyalty to his students and staff, and therefore be resolved by Mayor Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., and the Hazelcrest Village Board, and send our serious gratitude to Mr. Richard Griffin, Sr., for his commitment to our youth and community. And it further will be resolved and a copy of this resolution be given to Mr. Richard, Sr., and one to be placed in the files done on 24th July, 2018. Faithfully submitted, Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., Honorable Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., President. Mr. Griffin, I played against him in high school. My coach was Glenn Johnson. And we played against Griffin quite a bit, and those guys are definitely some jokers. Uh, he was a phenomenal guy at Hyde Park High School. And I, I, I was a young man, and seeing him and Glenn Johnson and the coaches from DuSable, really worked with youth in the city of Chicago, it was phenomenal how they were able to go into individuals' homes, meet their families, become part of their families, not only their coach. So it's our honor here at the Village of Hazelcrest to honor Mr. Griffin, Sr., who is now a resident now in one of our facilities, he's here in the Village of Hazelcrest. I want to give my thanks to the family for giving us this honor. Thank you so very much. Okay. Now, we have a new firefighter. Chief Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor, Board, and Citizens. We're here once again to bring our fire department back up to full staff as a result of one of our newer fires leaving, going to another community. We're here once again to try to keep up the effort of making sure that our department is fully staffed. The new recruit is William Galvin. William is a 26-year-old engaged to his beautiful fiancee, Julia Marab. He grew up in Calumet City and spent the last 26 years calling it his hometown. He did not always want to become a fireman. He went to the State, Illinois State University to be a high school business teacher. So during his time at Illinois State, he realized that education was not his cost. There's more to the story, you understand, at the end of it. He calls his father Bill Galvin, the retired Calumet City Fire Department, he was the fire chicken in Calumet City. He calls his father father in token, and he wanted to be a fireman. And he, you know, he wanted to change his direction in life and become a fireman, which was a very, very good decision in my opinion. And after a long conversation with his father, he enrolled in EMT school for the next semester. From there, he went on to be a paid-on call firefighter in Burnham. Well, in Burnham, he went through the English paramedic program, got his license and basic certification from Prairie, Prairie State. He also became a part-time firefighter, paramedic in Oak Forest, and then on to a full-time contracted fire department with the Slosso Fire Department. He's honored to be a part of the Hazelcrest Fire Department. He could not have done it without the support of his family and friends. He was devoted and determined and an ongoing addition to the team. When he's not at work, he enjoys spending time at the family, lake house, wake surfing, wake boarding, or just relaxing. After all that, he still managed to find time for a quick 18-minute.
Well-rounded.
Once again, I'm honored to call on Hazelcrest Fire Department my new home, and he's excited for what this next chapter in his life will bring for him. So he's been in the fire service, knows what's going on, not just from becoming of age to be a fireman, but from a young, young, young age with the father being a fire service officer. So I'm sure he's had a very, very nice and important upbringing. So we at the Hazelcrest Fire Department, second to the meeting, we're glad to have him, and he'll be a brilliant addition to the 18 men that we have serving for this community.
I'm gonna need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
William Galvin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And abide by all ethics requirement per the Village of Hazelcrest.
And abide by all ethics requirements per the Village of Hazelcrest.
Cook County.
Cook County.
And the State of Illinois.
And the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the Village of Hazelcrest.
In the Village of Hazelcrest.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That's almost all. Thank you, sir.
Mom's out there.
It's mom.
Oh, yeah.
Brother.
Take care for the family, brother.
Oh, wow. That's the family.
All the group is here. Oh, wow.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One last one.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Fantastic. Yes, it's, okay. So, we just had the Griffin family walk in, so I'm gonna read this resolution again. All right. That's a resolution in deep gratitude to Richard Griffith, Sr., whereas Richard Griffith, Sr. was born July 26, 1937, to Walter and Neely Griffin, Sr., in Mississippi, Tennessee. And whereas Richard Griffin was united in holy matrimony to Barbara, and to this union, two sons and one daughter were nurtured, Kimberly, Richard, Jr., and Randell. And whereas Richard Griffin was a dedicated coach and mentor, and he remains a loyal friend and lovely father, and whereas Richard Griffin was a former tight end for the Oakland Raiders of the National Football League, alumnus of Tennessee State University, and a proud member of Capa Apfa Side fraternity for more than 50 years. And whereas Richard Griffin, also known as Coach Griffin, officially called Pops, was a devoted football coach at Hyde Park High School for more than 30 years, unseverately assisted many students with entry into college and the NFL, graciously retired for service after 40 years, is now 80 years young. And whereas Richard Griffin has a gymnasium named in his honor in Hyde Park High School as a testament to his loyalty to his students and staff, and therefore be resolved by Mayor Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., and Hazelcrest Village Board, send our sincere gratitude to Mr. Griffin, Sr., for his commitment to our youth and community. We furthermore resolve that a copy of this resolution will be given to Mr. Griffin, Sr., and one will be placed in our files, this done, on this 24th day of July 18th. Faithfully submitted, Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., President. And I said earlier, I remember Coach Griff, I actually played for Coach Glenn Johnson before he was at Carver High School. He was a good friend of Griffin. He says hello, by the way. So, I was at Glenn's when he first coached at Carver, his first job at 22-years-old. I'm breaking two of you off here, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Griffin, he was playing with pretty rough guys, grateful, but they got the job done. That's it.
Unfortunately, he was hospitalized, so he wasn't able to be here himself.
Thanks so very much.
He also takes pictures right here.
His daughter's on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Really appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we have the manager's report.
Just gonna make one note, a meeting that I had, a special meeting with the executive director at SMA, and also taxing consultants to talk about some of the fluctuation of revenue that's gonna occur as it relates to how exemptions are used, as well as revenue streams relating to property taxes. So, we've got some work ahead, but it was a good meeting. That's all I want to share.
Legal?
Police.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, citizens. A couple things. First of all, as you know, we're accepting applications for new police officers. The deadline for applications to be actually in the police department is August 8th. You can pick up a packet at the window in the police department, or you can contact the police department by phone and have one email to you. We will be doing testing on August 8th. We'll have an orientation that morning, and then we will have our physical agility test, the state mandated physical agility test. Those who pass the physical agility test, we're gonna be giving them lunch break, and then they'll come back and take the written test in that afternoon. So, we're looking to get some folks into the police academy, the police academy, so we can get fully staffed, we're pretty sure. But that process is ongoing right now. Also, National Night Out, as everybody knows, is Tuesday, August 7th. It's going to be at the Family Center on 170th and Dixie Highway, Dixie Highway, and starts at 6:00 PM. It's gonna be a tremendous event. We got a lot of good surprises. We're really trying to get the community to come out. So, it's gonna be a real, our first big event for our new community policing officer also. And then finally, the date for closing for St. James Hospital has been pushed back. Originally, it was gonna be July 31st, but it's been pushed back to the week of August 13th. That date may change. I guess they've come across some challenges, but for those of you who don't know, do know that St. James Hospital in Chicago Heights will be closing down. They will have a 24-hour urgent care, but they won't obviously be able to take ambulance services. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna have a huge effect on all the other hospitals as far as ambulance runs in the South Suburban area. That's all I have, sir.
Public Works?
Good evening, Presidents, Trustees, fellow directors, and citizens of Hazelcrest. Earlier today, I attended a meeting for Advocate South Suburban Hospital. The meeting was in regards to a utility infrastructure project that they're gonna be doing, which will have minimum impact to the furthest west lane southbound on Kiss. Tendrously for August 1st, they're gonna have to close that lane up, maybe about a block of that lane, or maybe 177 going north to 176. It will be a short closure, approximately one day, as our state is steadily scheduled for August 1st, but that's based on them receiving a permit from the Cook County Department of Transportation. But the short meeting was, a final date is confirmed, but they will notify us, so then we can make sure that we notify the appropriate parties. In addition, last week, we had our second Department of Public Works safety committee meeting. This is a meeting led by workers in our Department of Public Works Department, where they talk about different strategies and ideas to promote safety across the Department of Public Works. And one of the things that we're trying to anticipate and look at is if all of our trucks, particularly trucks that we use on work sites, have first aid kits inside them. Those are the type of products that we're looking to encourage and promote, from within, being led by our staff in the Department of Public Works. Also, last week, we had a meeting with Maystar, they demo their public works, I guess, project management software. Maystar is actually a system that is being used by Inspector Services Department, so as we look to integrate technology to help us better manage our work and public works. Those were one of the systems that we, that we did split and are considering maybe going forward with. Last week, I just had a, it's an introduction meeting with myself and the Department of Public Works for Country Club Hills. I know Country Club Hills is one of the communities that we share a border with, and of course, we do have some shared projects, particularly that we do know might be coming down the pipeline, so I wanted to start having a meeting with him, so we can start establishing a relationship with one another. And then last but not least, Thornton Equipment has started the process of an annual creek mowing. If you may notice, they've already mowed, I believe, the north side of the creek, right outside our village hall, and now I think they're now over to the south side of that creek. They will be mowing other creeks throughout the village, so residents, as you may notice, particularly during hours of 7:00, 7:00 AM to 3:00, excuse me, 7:00 AM to around 3:00 or 4:00 PM, that there'll be a large piece, a large truck or a large piece of equipment that's out, and there'll be out there mowing creeks. And that concludes my report for today.
I'm sorry, can you go back? You've mentioned the software for public work, I mean, not public works, for inspectional services? Was it inspectional services?
Maystar, which is currently being used by inspectional services.
It is, it is in effect, they are using it?
Yeah, so, to give you clarity on that, right now, we're in the process of making sure all the data is in there, uploaded accordingly. We're also in the process of doing some test runs with certain people in the department. It's not a full implementation right now, it's kinda like certain sectional stuff that are being done. The reason we brought up Maystar for Public Works is because ironically, Maystar was originally built for Public Works, where it's based out of, I believe, California. So, what we're doing is like, since we already have it for Inspector Services, we're trying to see if we could just kinda incorporate that as well for Public Works, as we do a full rollout for it. But it's in the works. We're doing a lot of backend stuff and testing right now.
Thank you.
That's it? Inspection Services?
No report.
Human Resources?
No report, sir.
Fire Department?
Yeah, I'd just like to make an addition to our swearing-in tonight, that I want to thank the board for being astute enough to continue to keep us at full staff. It's very important with the off-time that we have for other means of sickness, illness, and other things, with the additional people, we can still do what we need to do to support the community. And without astute board members taking my suggestions and giving us people to keep us up to 18 men, it was a good move on the part of former village manager, and it's a good move on the part of these trustees to continue to give us what we need to do the job that we do. So I appreciate it, and I'm sure the guys appreciate it.
There we go.
That's it? Thank you very much. Community and Business Relations?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Once again, I just want to remind everyone of our Hazel Nut Festival and Parade on August 3rd, 5th. This year, we have, we added a Hazel Nut Crown, a row court, and a pony ride. We just got our trophies in for the Chicken Wing Cook-Off, and our King and Queen, and 303 Basketball. Also, Saturday is our featured guest, Mickey Howard and Troop. And Friday night, we have Hazelcrest Has Talent, and Sunday is the Gospel Concert. So we are encouraging everyone to come out to the Hazel Nut Festival and Parade. Also, during the parade, we've given away raffle tickets, and the youth will have a chance to win brand-new bikes. We have up to 10 right now, new bikes that we will be giving away at the Hazel Nut Festival. You have to attend the parade to get a raffle ticket and, for your chance to win a new bike. Also, on the 15th of August, we have a Career Fair. From 2:00 to 6:00 PM, the Career Fair is just information on all the different trades. We want to have information on over 25 trades, so we encourage everyone to come out between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. Our Veterans Commission is having a step reset on Saturday, August 18th, from 6:00 to 10:00. And our Beautification Open Lands Commission will do a Full Moon Social. I also want to beg back and say, please join me, as Chief Mitchell had mentioned, our Night Out on Crime on August 7th. Also, the villager should be in your mailbox sometime this week. They have been printed, so please, everyone, look at the very informative villager that will be in your mailbox sometime this week. That ends my report.
Madam Commissioner, you forgot to mention the fireworks that we're gonna be having at the Hazel Nut Festival.
Thank you, trustee Ramsey. At the end of, at the end of our Hazel Nut Festival on Saturday, August 4th, we're gonna end with a firework display that will conclude to Saturday night, we bid.
Thank you so much. Economic Development?
Awesome. Thank you so much. As it relates to economic development, I basically shared with you where we are in that process, and at our September meeting, I will be giving a full report and a timeline in which we should see some things happening around the village. But I do want to make a statement as it relates to the President's Bridge Program. We will be climaxing the Bridge Program 2018 on Friday. On tomorrow, we will be having our Career Fair. I still have a couple of slots open, and I'm asking a few of the directors or the trustees to come in and take part in that in the afternoon, so please see me before you leave. We have had a great time at the Bridge Program. The students have learned a lot. They've certainly been engaged, and their parents are happy, the whole nine yards. And so we want to thank the board and the village president for the opportunity. And then last but not least, certainly we want to thank trustee Slaton for her sponsorship on last week. She did sponsor a trip to the bowling alley, and all of the students were excited about that opportunity. It's the first time we actually bowled in the Bridge Program, and so they were super excited about it, so thank you for that. And again, the Bridge Program 2018 will conclude on Friday.
I'd just like to jump on the Bridge Program. You know, the President's Bridge Program, which is this, this is called as Bridge Program, is a program that I hold near and dear to my heart. That program, again, I always like to emphasize, that program came for people like Coach Griff and Coach Johnson, when Coach Larry Hawkins used to run the program at the University of Chicago. He used to take a lot of our young kids from the inner city, and he used to call it the CYC Program back then. And actually, we would go to the University of Chicago in the mornings, and we actually had to do studies. We had math and science, but in the afternoon, we were able to hone our skills. If you ran track, you was able to get on University of Chicago track, played football, we did football drills, and then you had to do one item that you didn't do at all in sports. And so, we had guys play golf, we had guys do trampolines, and out of that program, and the motivation piece of that program was not there was a lot of money, but it was a little bit of money, but it was a lot of, a lot of learning. And from that program, I look around and I see guys in the NFL, I see guys who are golf pros now, who would never have ever picked up a golf club if they were not in the program. And so, I say that to say that this program, as we built this program, was to mirror that, to actually get kids younger, though, to get kids who were in sixth and seventh grade to actually do a program over the summer where they have to actually have academics, learn how to work with other kids, but also go to do things they would never do before. We went to Google one year, and we had the kids on the metro train, and went down to actually, to the museums, and then we had them in a TV studio here, then we had Bob Love come out and talk to the kids. And so, it's an enrichment program that we charge nothing to the kids, and these young kids get $25 a week. You would think it was a million dollars, because, and one thing they have to do, they have to come to every day, they have to be there every day. And matter of fact, Coach Johnson is one of the coaches in the program. He comes there twice a week to work with the kids. So, I'm excited about the program that we started in 2013, and we're still doing it So I'm excited about the program that we started in 2013, and we're still doing it today, and every year, we get more and more kids. And I appreciate the trustees coming out and actually enhancing the program by actually taking the kids out to do things they will probably never, ever do. And thank you, Irma, for actually using the instructors that we have. How many kids in 7th, 8th grade have college professors teaching them during the summer? And I think that's phenomenal to get them to actually come and actually work with those kids. So thank you for doing a great job, and I would thank the board for continuing to get in there. At this time, we're open for public participation for items that are on the agenda. If something that you wanna address that's on the agenda, this is the kind to come up and speak to it. Can I get a motion to open the floor for items on the agenda?
I move that we open for public participation for items that are on the agenda.
A second? Move by Trustee Slaton, second by Trustee Rias, to open the floor to items on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
You have to say, if you have something to say or address that's on the agenda, whether it is, this is the time to come forth and speak to that. Anyone in the audience? Okay? No one? All right, can I get a motion to close public participation for items on the agenda?
Move to close all public participation for items on the agenda.
Second.
They move by Trustee Ramsey, second by Trustee Grant, to close for items on the agenda. All's in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we have a very short agenda. We're gonna go through our agenda, and then we're going to adjourn. At this time, Trustee Rogers?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 10th, 2018.
Second.
They move by, it's been moved by Trustee Rogers, second by Trustee Ramsey, to approve the regular meeting items tonight, 10th, 2018. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, and Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Wait for the screen clear out here. Trustee Slaton?
I move to approve accounts payable number 19-06 dated July 24th, 2018, in the amount
Second.
We move by Trustee Slaton, second by Trustee Grant, approve accounts payable number 19-06 dated July 24th, 2018, in the amount of $335,811.98. All right, I got you. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Grant?
Thank you, President Osborne. I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Hazel Crest Village Code to add new Article 8 regulating of small wireless facilities.
Second.
They move by Trustee Grant, second by Trustee Ramsey, to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 25 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Hazel Crest Village Code to add new Article Number 8 regulating small wireless facilities. This regulation is a new regulation that's been put out by the state that is now gonna allow small cell towers to be put out through communities. This actually gives us more control over where those towers are put and actually what we can charge for those towers. As you know, as more people start using cell phones, that you find you get more and more dropped calls, that's because they don't have any cell towers anymore that can handle all the calls, and they're Texas that go through phones. So the towers that you're gonna see soon throughout all the communities and throughout the state of Illinois and throughout the country are the smallest cell towers attached to all kind of facilities. If we wanna regulate that and control that, this ordinance gives us that response, that ability to do that, and if you don't pass it by August, then when small cell tower contractors come in, they can do whatever they want, and you don't have any control over it. So we passing this ordinance to make sure that we have some control over that. You cannot opt out. You cannot let, say, you can't allow not to come in, so you have to actually have something in place, and this is putting something in place. Can I get any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore is not here. Uh, Trustee Rias?
I motion to adopt an ordinance amending Section 19-97B of the Hazel Crest Village Code to establish an additional parking restriction.
Second.
They might move by Trustee Rias, second by Trustee Ramsey, to adopt the ordinance amending Section 19-97B of the Hazel Crest Village Code to establish an additional parking restriction. Village Manager, you wanna speak on this item?
My understanding is that Super, uh, School District 152 and a half, there's been some issues in which the teachers are, or let me rephrase that, some of the administrators, teachers, and staff there are deciding to park in residential areas and as opposed to their actually parking area, and therefore it creates some types of problems where we're trying street cleaning, as well as residents having access, and some other, you know, emergency access to those right of ways. So one of the things that we're gonna do, or what we propose to do, is to pass ordinance letting the school district or that superintendent, as well as the School District 152 and a half, to let me know that we put some restrictions in place moving forward. And then we'll have a more one-on-one meeting with them as well.
So this won't allow any parking on?
In that area, but that school.
Is it on both sides of the streets or just the one side?
Both sides.
Both sides.
They have to park in their parking, they have a huge parking lot that no one uses.
I mean, no one, none of them use it.
Because they don't wanna walk through the building.
They have to walk through the building to get, instead of walking to the side.
Yeah, that's the rationale.
Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slate?
School teacher.
One school teacher up there, you know. Trustee, President Osborne? Oh, they not voting. Anybody on their thing?
I did.
It's not showing.
It did not.
Try it again.
They called it out.
They called it out.
They called it out.
I voted. I said, "There."
Trustee Ramsey?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to postpone the IHR Development Contract Renewal to Monday, July 30th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
They move by Trustee Ramsey, second by Trustee Grant. I read it, 'cause I can't even see it on the screen here.
Postpone.
Post, where we at?
Postpone.
Prophone the motion for IRS Development Contract Renewal until July 30th at 6:00 PM. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
That needs to be amended. The motion, the motion that we voted on was not?
It was amended.
Wasn't correct.
It was amended, but we were typing it. Yeah, we're typing it.
As I said, no, I meant yes.
Trustee Rias?
I motion to approve the 2018 street resurfacing project based upon engineer's recommendation to award.
Second.
They move by Trustee Rias, second by Trustee Grant, to approve 2018 street resurfacing project based upon engineer's recommendation to be awarded. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slate?
Yes.
Motion passed. Just want to count it for the public to know, the streets that we're gonna be resurfacing at this time, Central Park Avenue, Locust Drive, Maple, Oak Street, Hazel Lane, and Michael Drive in the Dynasty subdivision, and also Home Street over in Pot Hills. Okay. Trustee Rogers?
I move to approve the lease termination agreement.
Am Zumo.
Am Zumo, new village hall.
Second.
They move by Trustee Rogers, second by Trustee Ramsey, to approve the lease termination agreement for the new village hall with Am Zumo. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, I open the floor for public participation. Anybody wants to say anything, this is the time to come up. Can I get a motion?
I move that we open the floor for public participation for any items of interest.
Second.
They move by Trustee Slaton, second by Trustee Grant. Keep on calling her clerk, Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, anyone wants to speak, this is the time to come forward and speak.
Hello. My name is Emma Jean Harris. I live in Pappas, and I just wanna thank you for passing the parking situation we're having over there. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Emma Jean.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greg Washington. I reside at 3425 Maple Lane, and I come just representing the Hazel Crest Open Lands and XE Youth Commission. I know this is the last session of the summer, and I just want to remind the residents and the trustees and anybody who's watching this throughout the South Suburbs that we're still having our, that Open Lands on the 25th is still having our Ice Cream Social and our, and our Full Moon Experience and our Pokemon Go Day, Pokemon Go event earlier, early of the day of August 25th, 2018. Officially, the event starts at 2:00. Also, when it comes to Hazel Nut, Youth, Youth Commission, we will be hosting a talent show, and we encourage everybody in the neighborhood to check out, check out the talent show. We're going to have a lot of talented performers, plus we will be giving out prizes, plus Carl Persons, representing the Open Lands, will have tour rides around the Open Lands on Hazel Nut. If I'm not mistaken, that starts at 2:00, too, and we just hopeful that everybody can come and have a positive and good time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me. Could you please repeat the date and the time for the?
Oh, excuse me. August 25th, and it starts at 2:00.
2:00.
It's in the evening, they gonna have, they have the ice cream in the morning, right?
Well, in the afternoon.
Afternoon. Then they have a moonlight walk.
Yes. It's basically all-day affair, and we're, just wanna say, sew up and support your Open Lands.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mitch Harrington, and I think I live in the Highlands, on the 75th and Central Park. Two questions. When are you gonna start the resurfacing of Central Park?
Uh, we don't, we don't know what day. Do you?
Well, I mean, is it this month or next month or?
It's gonna be next month. Next month.
Okay. Secondly, normally, our trash is picked up on the second, I mean, on Mondays. Last two months, we had trouble with our recycles, where it wasn't picked up, and even yesterday, the schedule was off, 'cause half the people had their recycles out, half didn't. I'm just wondering, has to be a change in the?
No, recycles are, not this past Monday, recycles were last Monday.
Right.
So it's no change. People just get it mixed up.